Here we go. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council, City of Yuba City, on September 7th, 2021, to order. The governor's declared a state of emergency. It's been a while since I've read this. The governor's declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, AKA the coronavirus, while the governor recently issued executive orders N-721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions. There are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-0821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the City of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in the virtual meeting. In meetings utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast for this meeting, we'll be using the question and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
I would invite our esteemed city attorney to please read the items for the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two items set for closed session this evening. Item A is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6. The agency-designated representatives are Dave Vaughn, City Manager, Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director, Michael Jarvis, LCW. The employees' organizations are Yuba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, and Police Sworn Mid-Managers. Closed session item B is threats to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section 54957A, consultation with city attorney and/or city fire chief, police chief, director of public works, IT manager, and city manager.
Are there any comments from the public?
No public comment.
All right. We're going to go ahead and adjourn into closed session. All right. Go ahead and call this meeting of the City Council to order here on September 7th, 2021. Have some information to read. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, while the governor recently issued executive order N-0721, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions. There are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-0821 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the City of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in the virtual meeting. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
All right. If I could have, well, soon-to-be chief Brian Baker lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Salute, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And by its remain standing for invocation and inspiration, which will be led by Pastor Jason Poling from the Cornerstone Church.
There we go. You bow with me in prayer. Lord, we just come before you now. We just want to say thank you for being our God, and we want to say thank you for this great country in which we live in, this great state, this great city, and all its citizens here in Yuba City. We're just so privileged to have so many wonderful people here, and thank you for the leaders that we have, for the City Council and everyone else involved in keeping this city as great as it is, Lord. But we just thank you for those blessings. But we also want to, right now, lift up our city because there are many issues and struggles as well, as any city faces, and especially in this day and age when there's so much going on, obviously COVID-19 and just a myriad of other things that just burden us, and sometimes we just don't know what to do. And so we cry out to you. We need your guidance. We need your help. In many cases, we need your deliverance. There are people who are struggling at the fringes of society here in Yuba City, and we just ask you to show us how to help them. We pray for those that are sick in the hospital, those that are in ICU with COVID and other issues, or we just pray for their healing. Thank you for the nurses and doctors that are tirelessly working. Or thank you for this time tonight. We pray that you would give the leaders here and everyone here as citizens, you'd give us wisdom. Lord, I pray that you'd help us to trust in you with all of our heart and lean not on our own understanding. In all our ways, acknowledge you as the King. You know what's going on. We don't. So we acknowledge you as our King, and we know if we do that, you will direct our steps. You'll make them straight. You'll give us clarity, vision, and that's what we desperately need. So I just pray you'd be with the leaders, especially tonight, as they hear from the business tonight of the citizens. I just pray that you'd give them that ability to look to you for their hope, for their help, and their wisdom and counsel. I just thank you for this opportunity. Bless this great city of Yuba City. We pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and Lord. Amen.
Amen.
And Pastor Jason, if you wouldn't mind, he's gotten an announcement, I think is very appropriate, given the time, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so at Cornerstone Church of Yuba City over in 700 Washington Ave, if you know where King Avenue School is, that neck of the woods, we're kind of buried back in the neighborhood. This Saturday, 9/11, so it's 20-year anniversary of that event. We're doing this huge, big pancake breakfast, just a thing to like honor the men and women in blue and red and every first responder, and also our military. So anyone can come that serves in those areas, first responders, military, and their families can eat free. And anyone else who comes, all proceeds will go, 100% will go to Yuba City Fire Department and Yuba City Police Department. So we just want to honor these heroes of ours, and just a fun, easy, down-home way of kind of providing some more resources to two departments that are really special to the city. So I hope you can come. Invite those that you know that are in those areas of service, too, because they can eat for free, so it's going to be awesome. And it won't be the cheap pancake mix. It's going to be the real deal. Don't worry about that, that rubbery stuff.
Recipe to Manny over there. He loves pancakes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on with the agenda, city attorneys report on closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Agenda modifications, anyone? Not seeing anything? Okay. We'll approve the agenda as it remains. Ceremonial presentations. Up first is the Downtown Business Association Summer Stroll Update. Sandy Drone, Downtown Business Association. Welcome, Sandy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Boomgarden and City Council and City Manager for allowing me your time today. So Pluma Street, there's my little thing. Okay, thank you. Okay, so here's Pluma Street Shopping District, and we're going to be talking about today are the summer stroll. And I always talk about this just so that with our association, with our board, and with our community, what is the purpose for the Yuba City Downtown? Our mission is to preserve, promote, encourage, inspire businesses, and to provide safe and clean center for culture, community, life for residents and visitors. The DBA Vision Statement is to be known as the premier shopping, dining, and entertainment destination for our region. So we are talking about the summer stroll tonight. Here was our committee. So we've got Teresa Smith from Twin City Flooring, who is our event chair, Crystal Martin, who is our Downtown Business Association Director or Coordinator, and then all of our Scott Sergeant from Sutter Brewery, Brian Hopper, Tucker, Yuba City Police Department. I kind of added them because they actually are part of our committee, even though they don't realize they are. So thank you, Fire and Police. We do have meetings prior to our events. This is our logo that we came out with a couple of years ago, so it's been pretty successful, and we've kept that going. Our poster for this year, so how we've solicited, we've had great sponsors. Of course, our big anchor sponsor is the City of Yuba City. We have Sutter County, Yuba County Water Agency, Recology, Aventus, Grange Co-op, are some of the few this year. This was our big agenda. So as you see, there was a lot of activity. We had a DJ on Tea Garden House or Tea Garden Street. We had Lowe's. We partnered with Lowe's, and they did succulents workshop for the kids, which was a free plant that they could do at there. Kids Zone, we had a ton of activities there, attractions. We brought in a ton of attractions for kids to make it really kid-friendly as well. We hired some bands out of Sacramento, some from San Jose. Am I correct on that, Crystal? Yeah. And some of our locals as well, Center Street. We try to keep that as a local, our local bands. And then, of course, we had the Beer Garden, which we also included spike snow cones this year as well in cornhole. Here are some of the pictures from this year. If you look at the left top, that's Fernando's. It's one of our new restaurants that came in during, he started in 2000, the beginning of 2020 during COVID, and he's had a really successful time. Some of our vendors and some of the cute activities the kids did. We also had, on Center Street, we had a lot of food trucks as well, and you'll see Potato Potato is one of our local food trucks. So we had a lot of activity from Bridge Street to Clusa Avenue. And so that was pretty much a wrap for this year, for 2021. Some of the successes for this year was our first event since COVID started. So 2020, we had no events, and so we were really excited to be able to do something. We had an attendance of about 10,000 with half-capacity. Did a lot more spacing this year because of the current situation that we're encountering. We are working hard to have better attractions for the kids and the adults, to make it out completely a community affair. Created community, surrounding communities also came, and this year it was really fun to say that my city manager was there at 2:30 before the event started. So that was really refreshing because we haven't had a city manager in a while to attend, but it was great to see Dave there walking around. It was super hot, wasn't it? Yeah. I think it was like, this was the hottest event since I've taken over, or joined the board since 2018. This was the first time we've had a triple-digit. So we had no missing children, which was awesome. I didn't realize when we started events that that is something you do have to encounter, and we're lucky that we have the police department there to help us with that. So we increased our coverage post and pre. We actually hired, we have somebody that we hire that helps us with that because between Crystal and I and all the committee members, we're usually running around taking care of any little hiccups that are happening with our vendors. We also continue to strengthen our partnership with the city and the staff. We met our budget, which was a huge thing, and then as we keep on evolving, we are getting more expertise on our volunteers. So we're getting better at navigating logistics of a big event. So I wanted to thank the, I don't know, this was not Katie-approved picture, but this was at the event, but we wanted to thank, of course, the Yuba City Police Department, Sergeant Hack, who was his first year working with us with traffic. He did a great job. Katie, of course, and the team. Of course, Yuba City Fire Department, just with logistics, Fire Chief Anderson, Fire Marshal Fries, and the rest of his team. And then, of course, we've got Public Works, who helps us with closing down the streets. So Scott Chandler, Jack McDaniel's and his team, and then, of course, Dave Vaughn and the rest of his staff for helping us with any questions or concerns that they had. And then, of course, the biggest is our mayor, Boomgarden, and the City Council for your continued support on this event to make our event successful. And then I just thought I would add, because I know we didn't do a lot of events in 2020, but we do have some upcoming fun stuff. So this board is really engaged. We came up with a new DBA logo. We're going to be fine-tuning that and then presenting that back to the City Council at some point. We also have been working with Downtown Arches with a design company, and then we've been also working on our own to present to the city some downtown signage, just to bring some more visibility down there. You look at the sketch behind, and so the rough draft of our logo was on a napkin at a marketing meeting. Usually the best things happen on a napkin, right? And so as you look at the final, that's kind of what we had. We hired a graphic designer, and that's what he came up with from that. And you'll see a lot of those buildings there. We've got the Sutter Theater, which is important, the Water Tower, and then I think the biggest thing that we encounter for downtown is that people don't know where it's at. And so we put Pluma Street on that little logo, just so people know that that's kind of the anchor for that. And so anyways, the marketing team is still fine-tuning that, but that's going to be, at some point, we'll be presenting that to the council to see if they enjoy it and if they have any questions or critiques. And then also Downtown Arches. We've had, we're working with a company that we were hoping to work with the city on some options. I know that the biggest thing that we have, especially on Bridge Street, nobody knows that there is a downtown right there, and so these were some fun designs. These are all elementary kind of ideas, but it was just kind of fun to kind of see what we could do more down there, to bring more visibility down there. And then, that's it. Any questions from the council?
Open it up to my colleagues first.
No questions?
I do.
Yes, Mayor Boomgarden?
First, I would like to say thank you for what you and your staff and the members here do for downtown. I think downtown has been a longstanding partner with the City of Yuba City. It's nice to see the energy reinvigorating down there. We got the Sutter Theater, where's David? David, you know, we got some really exciting things going on and look forward to what you and the rest of your board and the rest of the businesses down there bring. Maybe the question would be, maybe just give us a little glimpse into what you've got coming up in the next few months that we might be able to take part in.
Okay. So we are doing some kind of October thing with Sutter Brewery. They're still in the works on that, so we're going to do some kind of October, Saturday weekend event. And then also, we still have our Christmas stroll, which we always do the second Saturday of the month. And then we are partnering, well, there's discussions of maybe the parade, the Marysville Parade. We've always agreed with Marysville that we would not do events on the same weekend, and so, but what they've presented to the downtown, and we were looking for the city, I think they reached out to the city, Carrie Hawk is the coordinator for that, is maybe bringing that parade at the end down on Pluma Street as well. And so those are some of the big activities that we have coming up. And so, and of course, because of the sensitivity to COVID, we're, you know, kind of navigating through how we release that and if, you know, if it's a safe opportunity to do that. But yeah, tons of stuff. We are ready.
Good. I think we are, too. All right. Any, nothing? Anything from the public? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Next up, next up is the Yuba Sutter Chamber Film Commission presentation, and that will be presented by Marnie Sanders from the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council. Thanks so much for having me tonight. And I am actually presenting on the Yuba Sutter Film Commission, and I'm co-presenting tonight, and I'll introduce my co-presenter in a moment here. But so I've had an opportunity to talk to some of you, so some of this you will have heard from me before about. But just for the audience and to introduce, I think, in more depth what a film commission is all about, I just want to give a quick introduction. And then, okay, here we go. If I can do the pointer. Okay. So what is a film commission? For those who don't know what a film commission is, a film commission is an organization that operates in your community to attract production to the area, to attract the film industry to the area. They come into the community, and they are utilizing a lot of our services, and they're utilizing a lot of our products, locations, that sort of thing. But a film commission is working to attract them and to be basically a liaison to them while they're here. So they're here to help them to navigate the community and to find the resources that they're looking for and the support that they're looking for while they're here. And really, the film industry is looking for an organization like that within their communities. Communities are often overlooked if they don't have a film commission because they just want to do away with trying to figure out how to navigate through a community. Instead, they can pick up the phone or shoot an email, and they've got a person that they can connect with to connect them to whatever it is that they're looking for within that community. And so really, you know, why should we think about having a film commission here in Yuba Sutter? Well, it can have a significant economic impact for our community, and really, it can be of benefit to our entire community. So like I said earlier, when you attract production to a community, you are attracting people who stay in our hotels, who are eating in our restaurants, who are utilizing catering, different kinds of services. I've listed some examples. I mean, the sky's the limit, depending on what the production is that's coming to town. It could be a big film, it could be a commercial, but there's all sorts of opportunities with production. And all of those dollars are being spent in our community. It's tax revenue for our community, and it really can add up over time, especially if we have a dedicated effort to attracting that production to the community. So at this time, I, like I said, I've talked to many of you about this. I've talked ad nauseam really about the film commission, but really, I'm really excited about it. I think there's an amazing opportunity for our community. This is a conversation that we have had for, I think, at least a couple of decades, from what I have gathered. There have been people in the community that have started a film commission on a volunteer basis. We've even attracted through that a Rolling Rock commercial to the community. But there's, there has not been a really concerted effort to make this happen in the community. So really, we were very interested in making this happen at this point. And obviously, the chamber sees the value in this because of the impact on our business community can be great. And obviously, the economic vitality of our community will be greatly impacted by it as well. So we're very interested in seeing this through. And so in that process, we've gathered a committee. We have a committee member here tonight, David Reed, who's been sitting on the committee. And then my co-presenter tonight, who is Sabrina Jurisich, she is the Shasta County Film Commissioner for Film Shasta, and she has been an incredible help to us as we try to navigate what a film commission is and how we can bring one to the community. So she brings with her an incredible amount of knowledge in her time that she's run the Film Commission in Shasta County. And I thought it would be of benefit for the council to hear from that perspective, running a film commission, how it has benefited Shasta County, how a film commission is run. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sabrina, and then I will be advancing the slides, and it will work perfectly. I just know it. Okay. And I'm on the first slide.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Marnie, and thank you, everyone, for, you know, allowing this to be on the agenda tonight. It is very exciting, and Marnie has definitely assembled an amazing team of people, and the community has been so receptive so far. So I'm very excited to share with you about what's happened here. So Shasta County actually has a really long history of serving productions, but in 2014, a film commission was designated, and as Marnie mentioned, basically a dedicated effort, she said, was established, funding started being put towards a position to see what that would do, and the county provided an official designation. And I'm going to be excited to show you a few, Marnie will flip through to some charts in a moment, to kind of show the difference pre-film commission and what we're currently seeing. But basically, one of the things that happens when you have that level of designation and when you really have a liaison established in your area is you get access to industry affiliations that validate that your community is really film-friendly. And so some of those would include film liaisons in California statewide, which is a network of film commissioners throughout the state. We have Association of Film Commissioners International, which is about 1,100 film commissioners throughout the world, and California Film Commission, which oversees our tax credit program in the state, as well as the Location Managers Guild International, and that's a network of location professionals that are specifically looking for locations. So all of these affiliations basically, you know, provide leads to us for high-quality projects that are looking at filming throughout the state of California. And so that is not available without a designated film commissioner in your community. Next slide, please. So Marnie had mentioned, you know, some of the benefits of filming in a community. Obviously, job creation is one of our top priorities. The position exists to promote economic development to a community, and so we definitely want to make sure that we're hitting, you know, local hires on projects, but then also, you know, in the hospitality industry, as productions increase in a community, you may see some job additions in those outlets as well. When a production comes, they're immediately injecting money into the local economy, and that is something that doesn't require brick and mortar. It's just an immediate infusion, and most of the time, the local community isn't even aware that a production has happened because they really have a light footprint on the area. It has the potential to attract tourists. I'll give an example later on again. And it's one of those things that really brings community members together for common, you know, even if it's a commercial, it's something that is exciting that that particular community has been chosen by a production and just, you know, allows different conversations to be happening within the community. And then also, you know, it generates tax revenue. So what they're spending in the community does equate to more money for perhaps emergency service personnel or other city projects that need some funding. Next slide, please. So one of the examples that I like to give is the California Tax Credit Program. Just as far as, you know, dollar for dollar, what is being spent versus what is returned. The industry averages about $1 spent to an $8 return rate. The California Tax Credit Program is a good example of this. It's trackable. You can go on the California Film Commission site and review what they've released. But in just this last round, they've released 572 projects that have over almost $18 billion in California expenditures. Now, those are qualified expenditures, so there's actually a higher return than what you're seeing because there are certain things that don't qualify that are still spent in the communities, if that makes sense. So more money was actually invested into that recently. Governor Newsom signed into more support for the tax credit program and also some additional funding to build sound stages and studios, which are greatly needed. The other thing about your area and mine is that because we are considered out of the zone, which is out 30 miles, we're more than 30 miles outside of Los Angeles and outside of San Francisco, if a program is approved for the tax credit program, they actually get a 5% boost by filming in our areas that are more rural, and that incentivizes them to hire more local people, you know, and spend more money staying longer in our area because they're going to get a little more money by doing that. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this chart here is showing our verifiable productions that we've had, and you'll see one dating all the way back to 1918. And basically, when I came into this position, I kind of wanted to know, what was the history? What have we had on record? So this is a mixture of files that we had in our office from a long period of time, but then also outlets like IMDB.com, where you can go and see all kinds of details about productions, anything that was released, and even throughout the years, if somebody has said, hey, did you know this filmed here? It's been added to this chart as it's been verified. But one of the things I definitely like to mention, there's a little arrow on the bottom towards the right-hand side of the screen, and that little arrow indicates when the film commission was officially designated and when funding began. There was an uptick, you'll see immediately after that arrow in 2015, and it did go down in 2016 when the position was vacant. And I like to point that out because it's not enough to have a designation. You have to have somebody working the position that knows how to work in the industry, that knows how to serve it, in order to keep the momentum going. So we had, obviously, a downturn in the midst of COVID, but most of that was commercial productions, and that just hit the industry pretty hard. But if you can go to the next slide, Marnie, you'll see our, while the productions went down to a particular degree, the economic impact held pretty strong. the economic impact held pretty strong in 2020. And we're actually surpassed our highest year already in 2021 because production is considered an essential industry in California. So I've worked very closely with our cities and our county to make sure that production can safely go on, keeping our community safe and while following industry guidelines, which are very strict. They want to make sure that they can keep working, so they're very good at being COVID compliant in the process. So if you could go to the next page, please. So I just did want to share that this year, we've had 31 projects, six scouts, 124 shoot days, 605 reported room nights, and we've already surpassed the $1.6 million that has been our best year ever. So final report will come out at the end of 2021. But we have a lot of demand for locations, and the industry loves new locations. So that's one thing that's going to be wonderful to bring to the table is that you're going to have an abundance of new locations for location managers to look at as they're considering new projects. Next slide, please. And I just did want to highlight, you know, some of the ways that we measure success. It's one of the beauties of the film industry is that it's reportable. It's trackable from beginning to end. So I can tell you how many inquiries we've had, how many production days we've had, what types of productions are coming, whether it's commercial or independent film, links as productions are released, and, you know, so on and so forth. If we're advertising somewhere, I can tell you what the reach has been and that. And it is very targeted as far as advertising goes to the industry. So we've been able to to measure all those successes. Next slide, please. One of the things that is challenging to track is what we call film tourism. So one of the things about having really great productions come that have a strong reach, whether it's a national commercial or a studio film, which is the best that we could possibly get, getting on screen in front of in front of millions of people is always the way to go. So it can turn into a commercial for your destination. But we still have people come to the Lake Britton Bridge, which is near Bernie Falls, and put themselves in the scene of Stand By Me, where the bridge scene happened. So I don't know how many of you have seen that film, but it's one of those that, you know, decades later, later still has an impact on people where they want to come and be part of the production. So that's a benefit to the community long after a production is gone. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Marnie did a great job of reviewing what a Film Commission does, but I hope that information helps as well.
Thank you, Sabrina. And Sabrina has taught me a lot about about Film Commission, and I continue to learn more. And it's such an exciting industry. And I hope that you heard from Sabrina the value that a Film Commission can bring to a community and certainly has done for for Shasta County. And I've had other conversations with other communities with Film Commissions and very similar stories of economic impact over time when there is a concerted effort focused on attracting production to the area. So again, I see this of great value. So in working with the committee, we've kind of laid out what we see as our three-year plan to get fully up and operational, with our first year being kind of the the infrastructure build. So that website cataloging our area to to promote to the film industry, building that social media presence that we are, in fact, you know, film-friendly. We want you, we want you to come do your production here. Working on the designation and the nonprofit status. And then, of course, consultation throughout this process, understanding that we're not the experts and and we're reaching out to the experts to help us get this in place. And so we're looking at about $50,000 in the first year. And then moving into year two and three, more of that, more building of the infrastructure, more really promoting and getting connected to those affiliations that Sabrina had talked about. Getting a part-time staff person who is well-versed in in the industry. And then moving into year three, being fully up and operational with a full-time staff person dedicated to promoting the Yuba Sutter area and being that liaison to production when they're in town. And so we are really happy to announce that we have got our first commitment of $25,000 from the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And so we're halfway there in our first year, which is really exciting. But we're, what the plan is, is to approach all of our jurisdictions within the Yuba Sutter area and hopefully get a financial commitment from each of the jurisdictions as well. So this is not, this is not a one-time, you know, funding request. This would be an annual request. This is an organization that is primarily funded by the jurisdictions in which they operate. So this isn't a strange request when in terms of Film Commissions. So what the plan would be is to, after this, submit a formal financial request to the City Council. I have plans. I'm already on the calendar for Marysville City Council and Sutter and Yuba County's Board of Supervisors. We will be doing the same presentation to them as well. This is going to be of benefit to the entire Yuba Sutter area. So really, it's, if you look at that $150,000 in the third year, that's a rough, you know, estimate on what it would cost to have a fully operational Film Commission. That is a drop in the bucket in terms of, you know, what you're going to see on return of investment. As Sabrina had shown earlier, could be upwards of a million or more in economic impact. So and, you know, split between the jurisdictions, not a real significant investment. A very worthy investment, for sure. But again, I just wanted to present it formally to the to the council. Thank you for that opportunity, and we'll plan to submit a formal request. And then any additional questions or any questions?
From the council? You have something? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Thanks, Marnie. And I'm sorry, I forgot the young lady.
Sabrina.
Sabrina, thank you. Sabrina, I just had a couple of questions in to understand better how you establish the Film Commission in Shasta. Because you've been doing this, and by the slides, it shows some success, some really good success up in Shasta. So I guess my first question is, how many, how many commissions are established like this in California? Do you know?
Throughout California? I'm sorry, there's a little bit of feedback.
Yes.
So there's 42 film offices that are members of Flix, which means that they have county-wide or greater jurisdiction designation. And so there are, in California right now, there are eight counties above Sacramento that are without representation, including Yuba and Sutter Counties.
Okay. Is there any other county near us in those eight?
That has designation? Or I could actually send you a link, or I could share it with Marnie, and she could share it with you as far as the various offices throughout the state, if that would be helpful information.
Well, more towards the northern part of California. Can you hear me? Most, the northern part.
So right now, I'm actually overseeing Shasta County and Tahama County.
Okay.
And then we have another Film Commissioner that, Cassandra Hasseltine, who oversees, or, sorry, Humboldt and Del Norte Counties.
Okay.
And then we're pretty much the solitary Film Commissioners. We do have El Dorado County, Kathleen Dodge. And then in Placer Lake Tahoe, there's Julie Johnson, who's Film Commissioner there. But I think otherwise, there's no, there's no Flix members north of Sacramento.
So what's the difference between a Film Commission that is funded by a city or county? How are you funded?
So I'm publicly funded because we are not allowed to charge productions for our services. Typically, it's either, you know, funded through city or county funds or a combination of those. Or it could be privately funded if there's an area that, but typically, that's not the predominant support. It could be like a private foundation that helps. And then I also have received funds from, like, Business Improvement Districts for the hotels.
Okay. So you're funded, your your commission is funded by the county? I just want to make sure I have that clear.
Oh, there's funds, so throughout the state, you're going to find all different kinds of funding structures. Typically, they're city and or county funded. My Film Commission has been funded through a T-Bid Tourism Market or Business Improvement District. And then the city of Redding has been the primary funding sources for my Film Commission. But there's also been some private sources as well.
Okay, great. What's your annual budget?
I could give you that information offline.
Okay. So you're not a nonprofit? Your Film Commission?
We are, we're establishing a nonprofit for the Regional Film Commission. We're actually under the umbrella of a different nonprofit at the moment.
Okay. So how many commissioners in your work? Do you have a committee that helps you, or how does that structure look like?
For my office specifically? I'm the only person in my office at this time. I have people that I bring on for special projects that I contract their services.
I think that's fairly typical as well. It's run by one person.
Just, yeah, I was just trying to understand the the structure and how how much it would potentially.
You would have, like Film LA, for example, has over 100 Film Commissioners, 100 employees.
I could see LA be very different.
Permit processing. So a lot of those people are doing different services than just being the liaison to the film industry, if that makes sense.
Right. I was just wondering if there was a way to show or demonstrate through the work that you've done, you know, if the county is seeing, obviously, the million dollars of revenue that are coming in, over a million, that, you know, knowing that annual budget for the Film Commission. And are you overseen by the Board of Supervisors or which department, you know? How's that structure? And and you're saying that other cities do it differently. So there's, there's different ways that this could be completely established. That's what I'm hearing you.
Well, I, because I have a designation from the Board of Supervisors, I report to them directly every year, but then I also report to other stakeholders. So I'll report to the city of Redding. I'll report to my hoteliers, you know. So I report to everybody who has a vested interest in this.
Got it.
And my report's public, so I can share that information with you, too.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I think part of what you were asking, it is going to be, it can be a little bit confusing because we are all sit on several boards and commissions as several people do out there, too, which implies there's several people on a commission, planning commission, for example, right? That imply, it may imply that. But we have a commissioner, or the Film Commission is a commissioner, who is basically that person, and that's just been entitled. They've just industry standard this, what they've been given. So it's very valuable, and I really appreciate the full of information in your presentation, Marnie and Sabrina. Thank you as well. I really appreciate that. It's, it looks like, it's kind of invigorating and exciting because when you see, when you get up into seven figures, you have our attention. And, you know, that's a good, not only is it something unique and different, you have folks coming in, doing their projects, injecting these little booster shots, hopefully, big booster shots into our economy. And it's something that's interesting, and and at the same time, along the way, it's fun, and we're getting some notoriety as the the bridge thing from that one movie you mentioned, Sabrina. And that's just one example. The example I've been giving to folks is how many people still go to Bodega Bay to look at the Hitchcock Schoolhouse from the movie The Birds, right? And they got to buy gas and sleep and eat, too, at the same time. So it's all this residual income. I know that I may not be alone up here in that. First of all, I fully support it. Good to go. To what level? I don't know what we can, what we can swing, but that's for us to discuss at a later date. But I forgot what I was going to say.
That was good.
Got too excited. I got too excited. What was I saying?
He got to the support.
Support.
Full in. I didn't know what the rest made.
The, oh, my God. How embarrassing is this? What was I going to say? I'll admit it. I forgot what I was going to say. I'm a grandfather. I'm entitled to do that. But I know that, I know that it's a good thing, and I just appreciate the fact that we're going to have a lot of this, hopefully, a lot of activity coming here to to our community. And thank you so much. And I am just really frustrated that I forgot what I was going to say.
You'll remember later, I'm sure.
This is important, too.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come. And for Sabrina, thank you, Sabrina, for lending your expertise.
Yeah, it's interesting because we have the photography, you know, for example, of our Sutter buttes out here. And we sometimes market it as a hiking Mecca or whatever and whatever, but you can't get to it because it's it's kind of landlocked, or you have to pay. But when you get them on the film, there's one recently when they they used Beal as, I think it was desert. But you see U2 taken off, and there's the buttes right there in the background. So what's that?
You're just fine.
There you go. Spielberg. So anyway, great idea. Mr. Mayor, were you going to?
I've got some folks that want to talk.
Okay, perfect. Maybe they'll, maybe I'll remember what I was going to say.
The timing is perfect.
Ex-wife would love to, if she was here right now.
So first, thank you, Marnie and Sabrina, for your time. We do have a couple of folks in the audience that have indicated a desire to speak, which would go back to that podium back there. And the first one up is Mr. Ryan Graham. You're welcome.
I'm a supporter as well, just full disclosure. Thank you so much. This is green light. Green means go. Hi, my name is Ryan Graham. Thank you for this opportunity and fantastic presentation, Ms. Sanders. And thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for staying in front of this subject. Two years ago, we started a film production company called Orchard Fort LLC. And I just kind of wanted to take an opportunity to provide real-world context to this subject. It's not really pie-in-the-sky stuff. We are currently rounding third base in pre-production on a television pilot. It's a situational comedy. I'm really enthusiastic about this project. We've got, as a production company, we've got SAG signatory status. That is, we are signatories to the Screen Actors Guild. That has provided us access to their stable of tremendous, incredible talent with these actresses and actors that got, they have incredible national agency exposure. So we're going to film in Northern California. I would like to shoot in Yuba City. I'm from here. There are some locations on location and some exteriors that I'd like to shoot. And the first thing that we would do, and bear with me just a moment, because Sabrina, correct? Sabrina, I believe, I hope I have your name right because I wrote it down, and I'm not looking at it right now. The first thing that we would do is that a location director or a scouting agent would go to Flix. And this is a Film Liaison in California statewide. And this is sponsored through the through the California Film Commission. And we would, a scouting agent would look up the location, click on it, the searchable map of California. And if you can see it, there is a swath here, the width of California where Yuba Sutter County should be. What does that translate for for a for a film producer, right? That means I could expect my insurance premiums to go up because the smart money, the dudes looking at their actuary tables are saying that I'm at a greater risk of failure should I choose a location that is not represented by a Film Commission? Where do I go for permits, right? These are some, this is some of the paperwork that we need to take to file with the insurance adjusters and with SAG so they can verify that we're keeping their people safe during a pandemic. So that's kind of a stick. A carrot, I'm a eternal optimist, and I like to look at the carrot. And this is a big carrot. PWC has just just released a, their latest figure is $143 billion. That's PricewaterhouseCoopers is estimating that $143 billion, billion with a B, is going to be invested in scripted entertainment this year alone in North America. Never, you know, we think about it, never before has there been such an investment opportunity in scripted entertainment than there is now. Our consumption patterns have changed, right? We, we are hungry for entertainment. And then there's a trend at the same time towards the decentralization of the industry. We don't have to be in LA, in Hollywood, to shoot a Hollywood-quality film. In fact, the economics are such, we can bring In fact, the economics are such, we can bring the talent here, uh, shoot using our infrastructure and save, I mean, we've been running the numbers for a while, at least 62%, almost two-thirds, cost. Demand is up, supply is down. Actually, is that my beep? In fact, my wife, when I was leaving, said, keep it short, uh, if only to get Madam Clerk out of here at a decent hour. So, I would love to take this conversation offline. Um, I think, I thank the chamber for, for staying ahead of this. I think, um, that this is a really significant investment opportunity. The folks in Los Angeles keep getting shut down because they can't get a hold of their COVID numbers. Uh, we should be part of that conversation and we should be a destination. I think Yuba City should be a destination and how, you know, think you jump in your car, you put an address, the Googles brings you up your map. We need to get on the map. I think Yuba City, you know, should be on the map just to be ahead of this, uh, in, involved in these discussions. Thank you, I think my back went out.
Oh, you're good. I just have one question. In your, in your pilot, do you have any roles for forgetful retired CHP?
Actually, there is one.
Okay, good.
We have.
Can you give him one line?
There's 12 to 14 roles that we're gonna cast locally.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'll do it.
Taking submissions. Thank you for that.
Well, as long as we don't memorize anything, we're good.
No, all he says is support.
I would happily take this conversation offline too. I think my, my information's floating around, so I'd love to, uh, you can tell I'm enthusiastic, so.
It is, I have it and I'll, we'll chat, that's great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
All right, next is Mr. David Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to add my support too as the executive director of the Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture Council and also the owners and operators of the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. Uh, we've been involved with Marnie and Sabrina on the, uh, commission, uh, exploratory committee for many months now. And this, you're talking to a guy or looking at a guy who grew up in LA and, uh, you know, film production was on every corner that I lived and worked in my 25 years there before I moved back to Washington DC. And there were a lot of films being produced in DC too, but, and as far as the, the comment was made about community pride, uh, it's just like when Spielberg came to town with Bridge of Spies and just for that day or two, I mean, the whole town lit up on social media. And so there's something to be said for that. Is that equate to dollars and cents? Yes, ultimately, but it's also like, it makes you feel good, you know? We're part of something bigger than ourselves, so, and that was a, a great fun thing, uh, that I enjoyed. You know, film is in the air here in Yuba Sutter. As I think many of you know, we, Yuba Sutter Arts will be hosting a short film festival. Uh, submissions are due September 19th. If you got a 13 minute or less in the, one in the bag, as long as it was filmed in Yuba Sutter, we're gonna be, uh, showing those on October 2nd in the new Sutter Theater, um, as a, a film festival. Looks like it's gonna be about a two-hour program. We've also gotten submissions, uh, coincidentally, from international filmmakers. The short films have been coming in, so we're already planning our next kind of international short film festival. Uh, we're also, October 23rd and 24th, another filmmaker in town, uh, will be doing a world premiere of his, uh, feature film. Uh, there are other filmmakers in town in addition to this gentleman, who I've just met and I, we gotta connect at some point. Um, you know, it's, it's here, it's up to us to package it and, and help market it. And this, uh, as Sabrina and Marnie have pointed out, this really becomes a, a kind of a sales job to some extent. You gotta know what you're talking about, you gotta have the resources, you have to have the location library ready to go. And if you look at any of these other, uh, film council websites like El Dorado, Chastity County, and you look at the tabs, it's really kind of cool. It's sort of a, an index of, of that community. And particularly going through the, the locations, it's really kind of fun. It's sort of a, uh, your own self-guided tour of what's out there that you might not have known about. And I can just imagine the kind of, uh, website we'll ultimately develop with these, uh, locations, uh, available to location managers and these production companies. I also see it as a, an opportunity for furthering career technical education. We've got a great mass communications department at Yuba College. Uh, I can't believe they wouldn't just love the opportunity to work on, uh, on a professional production, whether it's a, uh, TV, uh, production or a feature film or a commercial. And I think those production companies, at least some of them I've heard, uh, would allow that. So another great opportunity for local, uh, film students. So lots of, lots of reasons to, to justify our overall support of, uh, the creation of a, of a film commission. So thanks you all, thanks to you all, and, and, uh, now I'm gonna go over to the Sutter Theater for our, our first, uh, West Coast Swing dance, uh, program tonight, so, thanks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this subject? How about online?
Yeah, public comment.
All right. Well, thank you again. Thank you, Sabrina, Marnie, and the rest of all of you who are interested in a film commission. We'll look forward to receiving your information. Next item for, uh, the agenda this evening is public communication, uh, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in our council chambers. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one can be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. I have two written requests before we open it up to public communication. The first one is from, uh, Mike LaBlue. He's the fire battalion chief with the Yuba City Fire Department.
Council city manager.
There's no green light.
Leave it to a fireman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager. On behalf of the city and your Yuba City Fire Department, we'd like to present this video in remembrance of 9/11 and, uh, let's not us all, let's let, let's not us all forget those who lost their lives.
Thank you, Chief. I, um, I think it's important that, uh, on the 20-year anniversary of 9/11, that we stopped for a moment, remember those who lost their lives, but also remember the feeling in the country. We were pretty united then, far different situation than I think we find ourselves in today. You hate to have, uh, an incident like that, um, to get that kind of feeling, but it's important, uh, for those folks who, uh, lost their lives, the, the first responders who so courageously ran up the tower trying to save people. And, uh, I think, uh, we, I appreciate, uh, Chief bringing that into the chambers this evening so that we can, that we can remember. Also have, uh, a written request from Police Commander Brian Baker. Another incident that has recently affected the nation. Chief, soon to be chief, sorry.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we'd like to bring forward a tribute on behalf of our city and our public safety departments to the men and women who gave their lives abroad so we could have the freedoms that we enjoy every day here in our, in our home soil.
Today, we honor the men and women who have died in service to our country. Our debt to the heroic men and valued women in the service of our country can never be repaid. They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices. For love of country, they accepted death. And they who for their country die shall fill an honored grave. For glory lights the soldier's tomb and beauty reeks the brain. It is foolish and wrong to mourn the men who died. Rather, we should thank God that such men lived. God bless the families of these men and women, and God bless America.
If you'd join me in a brief moment of silence, um, for these 13 heroes. Thank you. Okay. I do have a speaker card from Diane Jager.
Members, I, uh, this, oops, if you can hear me. This is a little follow-up. You, uh, received a email from me, um, earlier concerning a document from the state of New Hampshire regarding the commission's report to them in reference to 5G. This is a, this is a update on that. On August 13th, just 24 days ago, US Court of Appeals for the District of Columbia, in regards to a lawsuit of Environmental Health Trust versus the FCC, found the FCC violated the Administrative Procedure Act and failed the American people. The court found the FCC's decision to retain its 1996 safety limits for human exposure to wireless radiation arbitrary. The court held that the FCC failed in so many areas, and especially that they had not over the last 24 years updated any of their, their materials as, as far as what those elevations and radiation, any standards that they should, equipment should be held to. The court has thus ordered the FCC to provide a reasoned explanation for its decision to retain its arbit, its really archaic testing and, uh, for determining whether cell phones and other portable electronic devices comply with its guidelines, address the impacts of RF radiation on children, the health implication of long-term exposure to RF radiation, and the pervasiveness of wireless devices in our culture, and other technological developments that have occurred since the commission last updated its guidelines 24 years ago. And also address the impact of RF radiation on the environment. This is a very hopeful step, but it does not remedy the problem at the local level. The Telecommunication Act of 1996 literally stripped the citizens and local lawmakers from preventing the installation of any and all communications okayed by the FCC. The FCC, through the Telecommunication Act, has literally stolen our ability to protect ourselves. We are not allowed to prevent 5G towers to be installed, but they cannot stop us from dictating where they can and cannot be placed. That is the point other communities in our nation are acting on, and there are a lot of communities that are acting on this at this point. But we need to act now because the FCC put in place a fast track to put in literally over a million antennas in the United States. The greater the number of 5G towers and/or their hazardous placement, more importantly, the greater threat and harm to our residents, our environment, and our agricultural economy. Prevention of towers being placed near residences, schools, and public buildings is the only way to combat this problem. Removal or relocation, once the towers are installed, is currently an unbeatable war. That is due to the FCC. Does this protect us in total by having control over the placements? No. But until the government amends or removes the FCC's control, it is our only chance of reducing the effects of 5G on our community. An additional large fiscal threat is the open door for lawsuits. The equipment manufacturers have already covered and protected themselves from any and all liability caused by the equipment they manufacture and its placement, and its placement. That leaves the first target for legal action, the local governing bodies. Around the world, countries, states, cities, and communities have been taking action for a number of years. Some countries are actually prohibiting 5G completely. Others are ordering towers and small cell transmitters be removed from residential areas, public buildings, schools, and hospitals. In the US, we have been lied to and a massive cover-up has taken place. Have you ever even heard of this lawsuit before mentioning it tonight? It's not the only lawsuit. There are hundreds of lawsuits in place right now against the FCC. As our elected officials, it is your sworn duty to protect those you represent. So the question is this, are you going to sit and wait for 5G to come in and then have to deal with the repercussions of the harm, especially as we are an agricultural community? And the devastation that they are seeing in Europe and that they are now reacting to and pulling out 5G, um, we wouldn't have an agricultural community. Or you, you get to work. And, and there are a lot of communities that are already doing this, that they are, that they are putting up restraints through building permits and how these towers can be minimized of their, their negative, uh, of the negative effects on our community. So I, one of the things on your agenda is going to hard. So I, one of the things on your agenda is going to hardwire to fiber optics. I commend you. It is the solution in part. So if you have any other questions, I have tons of information for you.
No questions at this time, but perhaps staff and the city attorney might give the public an update as to our efforts. We, we haven't been in sleep on this issue. It has been coming up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It turns out we have our FCC specialist online who's going to be here for the fiber optic matter. But in summary, we have been keeping very close eyes on what has been going on with 5G, the amount of regulations that we can do as a city to help protect local choice and ability to regulate our own communities. And so we're doing everything that we can under law to make sure that we have as much flexibility as possible for our community.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Oops. Heather Chambers, please.
Hi. My name is Heather Chambers. I live here in Yuba City. I like data, so I gave, hopefully each of you, something that I do. Every workday, I go and check the COVID stats on the cases, hospitalizations, deaths, the total of Yuba Sutter, and then divided by Yuba and Sutter independently. The other one is those cases by month, how many there are. I, I think pictures are much easier to take a look at. For example, there were 20 deaths in August. We're running 15 as of today. So the maximum that we had of deaths in a month was 48. That was last December. We're up, if we go on the same trend that we're on of roughly two a day, we'll have 60 by the end of the month. So that lets you know, in my opinion, that it looks like the hospital's getting kind of crowded. Now, with that, I have a friend who got notified that her, a friend of hers was in the hospital with COVID. She started coughing, running a fever, went in, got tested. She had COVID. She called me, let me know, and I said, "The first thing you need to do is get an oxygen monitor. And the second thing you need to do is make an appointment with your doctor, whether it's video, phone, or nurse line, I don't care, but you need to get ahold of your doctor." I was out of town over the weekend. When I came back, I found that, yes, she had gotten the oxygen monitor, and yes, her oxygen level had been dropping. When it went to, in the 80s, she was told by the nurse line to go into, go to the hospital. They had her walk 20 feet one way, 20 feet back the other. She had a reading of 87. After she rested, it was back up to 90. They sent her home. Did they ask her if she lived by herself? She's in her late 70s. Did they tell her what resources there were, or who her, did she have a doctor? Did she have any underlying conditions that could make this work? Nope. They just said goodbye. When a hospital gets overloaded, guess what happens? Corners get cut. She was not told about things like Z-Packs or monoclonal antibodies or ivermectin. I don't know which ones are the good ones. But basically, she was not given any choices. After she was turned away from ride-out, I kind of chewed her out of bed and told her she needed to make an appointment with her doctor. She did, a video appointment, and she collapsed while she was talking, which got their attention. Her doctor worked very, very hard to get her oxygen. She had dropped into the 70s. Okay? So he got her oxygen. She's borrowing somebody's portable unit because otherwise she can't leave the house. She's on a 50-quit heaven. And a lot of times before, if your lungs are too damaged, it's permanent. I would like to see some of our government leaders take a look at some of this, have a chat with the Bye County Health Doctor, and come up with some protocols so that our most vulnerable people, when you're sick, you're not thinking. She was lucky she had a friend who chewed her until she got the help she needed. She says, "If I hadn't intervened, she would have died from the drop in the oxygen." That's not okay. I'm a private citizen. I don't know what I'm talking about, other than what I read and what I've been seeing on the numbers. You have the numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. We do periodically have contact with the public health doctor, as well as with representatives from Adventist Hospital. I agree. I agree. Okay, anybody in the audience wish to speak?
Good evening.
You do not have to do that, no. Okay, I have a gentleman at the podium already, if you don't mind, no problem. You, you can be next. You're welcome.
I don't get called a gentleman too often. So my name's Thomas Burns.
Don't get used to it.
I just wanted to thank that lady for mentioning that 5G situation. And it's just another form of warfare, you know? We got all kinds of warfare against the people. I want to thank Joe Biden for the total screw-up in Afghanistan. And remind everybody to vote and get rid of this governor we got in California. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Ma'am?
My name is Janet Johnson, and I'm a Sutter County resident. I raised my children here. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren, in-state and out-of-state. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I wanted to address with what she had said. This is a personal thing. I have a cousin, just like a sister. She got really sick on August 3rd, and her daughter finally convinced her to go to the doctor, down to urgent care, on the 8th. She was tested for COVID, and they said, "Oh, you tested positive for COVID. Go home and isolate for 10 days." That would have been till the 18th. She probably had bronchitis at that time. But anyway, she was, she went home. She kept getting sicker and sicker and sicker. Finally, her husband took her down to urgent care on the 16th, and they said, "You've waited too long. Now you've got to go to the hospital." Well, she did not want to go to ride-out or Adventist. I wouldn't either with my experience with them. But anyway, she was taken to Sutter Roseville. And when I got the news after church that Sunday, I went home, and it's hard for me to get down on my hands and knees with my artificial hip and my artificial knee, but I got down and I prayed to God that she would be treated for bronchitis or whatever her problem was, and not as a COVID patient, that they wouldn't innovate her, that they would, she would have doctors that would have wisdom, that would treat her for what she actually was sick with. And God honored that. And she was diagnosed with double pneumonia. She had pneumonia in both lungs. She was in the hospital down there for a week. She was given steroids. She was put on oxygen. And she's been home now for several weeks. She's still on oxygen, and her lungs are still recovering from this. I truly do believe everything's about COVID, COVID, COVID. What happened to the flu? What happened to bronchitis? What happened to pneumonia? It's all about COVID. And the people that I know personally that have had COVID, they've had it like a flu-type symptom and things. And I know even people that are getting vaccinations are getting COVID anyway, because my daughter-in-law lives in Texas, and she called me and she said, "Janet," and she's a caregiver, she said, "I got the vaccination and I tested positive for COVID again." So I don't know, I just felt that I had to say something about this, that I feel like my, my cousin even said to me, she said, "You know, Janet, if I had died from this, it would have been listed as a COVID death. Nothing would have even been said about it being pneumonia. There are other things out there besides COVID." And I guess that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, this is the first time I've been able to come over here to the city council, and I just want to follow up with what at the Board of Supervisors meeting where the Board of Supervisors this last week. Oh, thank you. On my tiptoes, where they, they opposed the vax mandate, so the mandatory vaccination. And what I also shared there is I wanted to, which most of us will not see, because all you see in the newspaper are cases, cases, cases. And like Janet, what it just said, these, these cases are, everybody's got coronavirus in their veins. So whatever they're determining, it's, they need to find out what really is the cause. There's a lot of other things going on with that person when they have it. So the people, so people, we have had a whole year of scare, total fear from people. They're just, they're afraid, they're so afraid that we've got people now that would never take this vaccine, and now are taking it because they're going to lose their jobs. So the reason that maybe Adventist Health is, there's not many availability of space there is because you've got your nurses quitting. They're not going to take this vaccination because it's not a vaccination. It's, it's an mRNA that we, has never been done before, that has never been shot into our, into our body. And so, in fact, what's, what's happening right now, if you go to the VAERS website, it's a vaccination adverse event reporting system. If you go there, it'll show you what's happened with this, with this shot and the results from it. But what it's also telling you, it's only going to be 1% to maybe 10%. So when they say that the COVID, that the COVID shot deaths right now are 13,627, according to August 18th, let's multiply that by 99, or, you know, add a zero or add two, two zeros to that. Hospitalization because of the vaccination is 55,821. Urgent care, 74,000. Office visits, 100,000, over 100,000. And then you go into detail of what's, what this, this shot is doing to you and what it's doing to our young people and our children. That just, that just can't happen. We can't be putting this into our children. Myocardia, I'm sorry, miscarriages, 1,671. So there, before, any, any type of woman who's pregnant, don't get your vaccine. Let the baby, birth your baby, have your vaccine later. Don't drink wine, don't smoke while you're doing it. And now what are they doing? Take this vax. So now the mothers are losing their babies at, at high rate of that. Heart attacks are six, over 6,000. Microcarditis for the children, for the young people, are 5,093. And remember again, 1%. We don't know what it's doing to our children. So I stress that you will also follow along with what Sutter, Sutter County Board of Supervisors did, and also oppose this vax mandate for our, for our area, for our, for our city, and, and do not demand that these Adventist Health nurses have to be, we fired if they do not take this shot. When, whenever did the, did the, somebody else tell us, "My daughter's going to lose her job because of this, and she's so far away from the health field. What, what's going on here?" You know, so this, this is crazy. You don't, you don't fire somebody because they will not put something into there. Remember my body, my choice when they, of course, I mean, I'm against abortion, against what it does to unborn child, but they, you used to say, "My body, my choice." Where is it now? You don't hear that anymore. It's, they're saying, "You get this, you get this shot, or you're going to lose your job." So, thank you. I, I want to move over just a little bit, and I wished I would have raised my hand for, when you, when you put that up. I just want to tell you that, I know this is just one from the other, but it's all about the loss of life that we are, we are experiencing. I, I was on the Veterans Memorial Committee when we built the two memorials here in Yuba City and in Marysville. And I just want to let the community know, and whoever is listening, that we are going to put 13 crosses up at the memorials in honor of the, of the Marines and the Navy and the Army that we lost during that time. So, so if you can visit the memorials, they'll be an honor for the 13 people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for taking care of the, of the veterans as well. Anybody else? About online?
No public comment.
Okay. All right, we're going to move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed, removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on the remaining consent calendar items? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay. Bring this back for action from the council. Whoop, whoop.
Through the mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep, you did. You put a card in as well. Yeah, sorry about that, Mr. Mertz.
Yes, I would like to speak on item number 11 on the agenda. My name is Lawrence Mertz, and speaking as a citizen of Yuba City, 40 years, as well as a member of the Sutter County Tax Payers Association. The diversion of our tax revenue is caused by the distribution warehouses has been unbelievable. We went from almost 40% of our online deliveries, it doubled during the COVID. And what I'm trying to say is that I'm glad you're supporting this. I think we need it. This diversion of the tax revenue by Sutter County is unbelievable. I mean, excuse me, Sacramento County, that's where the warehouses are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, I'm sorry again for missing you. I know you submitted the card. Anybody else? Sierra, anybody online?
No public comment.
All right. Back to the council for.
Through the mayor, I move that to approve the consent calendar items.
I have a motion by councilperson Escondola, seconded by councilperson Harris to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar is passed unanimously. We'll move to business items. Item number 12 is an addendum to the City of Yuba City General Plan, EIR, in 2021 through 2029, City of Yuba City, City of Yuba City General Plan Housing Element. This will be presented by Mr. Ben Moody, who's our Development Services Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So definitely a mouthful there. And so, but I am excited to bring this forward. Tonight, I have our consultant, Placeworks, Jennifer Gaslim, here to help work through the presentation and answer, help answer any of the specifics as we work through it. So, so what does this mean? What this means in a nutshell is that a housing element is a required element of your general plan. With your general plan, this needs to be updated every eight years at minimum, if you're staying on good terms with HCD. And so our region is on this eight-year cycle, which is coming due here very soon. And so a lot of agencies, you've probably heard, from Sutter County to Marysville, in the SECOG region are working through this process. And so what this really does is it's, it's an update. It looks at our inventory, our housing. Jennifer's going to walk you through it, and it really brings us into state law and accounts for these, these projections of what the housing needs are in our region. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer, and, and then we can answer any questions at the end.
Very good evening. Jennifer Gaslim with Placeworks. Thank you for this opportunity to come and present your updated housing element for adoption, and then subsequently submission to the state. And I have a quick PowerPoint presentation to go over with you here of kind of the schedule that we took for the element, the components of it. It's a pretty meaty document. The regional housing needs allocation process, which is what drives the housing element update, and then some specific actions that you will need to undertake over the next eight-year period. Our initial review with the state, and then the sequo document to accompany the housing element. So no review of the housing element. It is a plan to accommodate the jurisdiction's fair share of housing needs over the next eight years. It is unique in the fact that it is an eight-year document that gets reviewed by the state every eight years, and it has to be certified for you to be in compliance with state law. So it addresses housing needs that are existing, as well as we project out the housing needs for the next eight years. We kicked off this project probably, I think, pre-pandemic, so I don't know if anyone remembers when that was. And we did have an initial planning commission study section, session back in April to kind of kick off and let everyone know that we're updating the housing element. We released the public review draft. We addressed some of their initial comments and then we took the housing element to planning commission, who then authorized it to you. Once it is adopted, then we will submit. It's a 90-day certification. They have 90 days to review it. And then you are done for the next eight years. The components of the housing element are broken into different categories. As I mentioned, we look at existing needs as well as we project out the needs. A new component of the housing element this round, that's new to you as well as to me, who's been doing this a very long time, is the assessment of fair housing and identifying any sort of barriers or, or issues with fair housing. So this is a kind of a sticky wicket of an issue and we tried to analyze all information and kind of provide a history of how development was occurred over the time since incorporation. And then the approach to the RENA, which is, I'll get a little bit more into that, but basically the state comes up with a regional housing needs allocation number. And basically this is a growth projection. It is not a mandatory development requirement. It is to identify that the city has enough land to develop should the market produce housing. And then, of course, we look at potential constraints to housing in terms of costs and fees and timing for how long it takes to get a building permit. And then we do a checks and balances process where we look at the previous eight-year housing element and identify what programs were completed and what programs should be continued forward. And then that feeds into the goals, policies and implementation programs that staff will then report on to the state. Every year, your annual housing element progress report will report on some of these actions that I'm going to get into here. So as I mentioned, what drives this process is the state comes up with a growth number and then that number is then assigned to councils of governments. In the case of Yuba City, your assigned allocation is 3,308 new units. That's again, we're identifying that there's land available to accommodate those units at varying densities. As for perspective, Secog's RENA number was 153,000. The interesting part about this is that there were, I did write your previous housing element, so I'm familiar with some of the development and some of the development that hasn't occurred. And so subsequently, 16 years ago or so, there was some pretty ambitious plans pre-recession. Nothing I need to tell probably of you all here, but there were annexations that were planned and there was development that was supposed to occur that definitely slowed down. So your previous allocation had planned for rezoning of land and that didn't occur in the last planning period. So because that didn't occur, the state kind of feels that you're kicking the can down the road and not identifying land available. And therefore we added the previous round, 529 units. So you have an allocation, again, to show that you have enough land for 3,837 units. We do not like to just take a rezone approach to these things. We look at every nook and cranny of your city and identify where there is vacant land or non-vacant land, a site that might have something on it but has potential for future growth. We also looked at all the development potential of your many specific plans. And then a new category this round is projecting out accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Those are second units, granny flats, all of those terms. So we can also count those. So we use those first three approaches before we identify any sort of rezone process. There is a program in the housing element, and I'll get into that, where there is not enough land zoned at 20 units an acre. And so we are, there is a program and the city has three years to identify additional sites to rezone to 20 units an acre to accommodate your potential growth moving forward. Oh, this is a really convoluted table. So it is in more excessive detail in the document, but basically it shows you what your RENA was and it's broken out into different income categories. And the lower income category basically is, this is a land use exercise. In the lower income category, we're looking at land that is 20 units an acre. So we're, and then the moderate income category is medium density, possibly duplexes or small, you know, condos or attached houses or anything that's a patio-type smaller unit. And then above moderate is basically all your single family. So as I mentioned, we have that 529-unit carryover. So then that increased the RENA. So we, as I mentioned, we take up what's off the top. We look at what your approved projects are. So we know that there is some development occurring specifically in the above moderate. And then there's also a project that is an affordable project. So we take those units, the 176, off the top. Then we can project out, as I mentioned, ADUs. Now, every ADU that you do build, you will get credit for it moving forward when you report to HCD annually. So right now we're just projecting 40 based on approvals of staff or of people coming in that want to actually do ADUs. And then we look at all the vacant land and underutilized, then the specific plans, then what is going to be coming online. And this is kind of the whole overview of what is planned for the next eight years. So where you see that there is a surplus of 1,122 potential accommodate units in the above moderate category, where we are short is the 208 units in the lower. And that's what equates to the rezone program that the city will need to do within the next three years is to identify additional potentially, now it's 10 acres at 20 units an acre. If you want to go higher, it's less acreage. If you want to allow higher density, which again, your code, your general plan allows up to 30, we took a very conservative approach to say 20 because that is kind of fits better. But you can go to 30 and that will be less acreage. That was a lot, really sorry. Couple of other things, housing element action items. So as I mentioned, so one of the other things is to set you up so that you have enough flexibility that you can approve projects as they come forward. And it's kind of a balancing act. So as you want to approve good projects that might not necessarily meet densities or things, to give you the most flexibility, one of the things that we are doing is there's a program that you will subsequently approve future down the road. There'll be a number of zoning code amendments. One of them will be to remove the permit process for the C1 and the CO and allow residential projects and commercial. It doesn't require you to do residential projects in the commercial. It allows for more development to occur because it, there was a track record of doing this. So we were able to sell to HCD that there's more land available and therefore that's why your rezone number is less. So this is, again, kind of a negotiation that we went through. Plus the rezone redesignation of the 10 acres to 20, at least 20 units an acre. Then in the last eight years, there's been a number of legislation that's been passed on amendments to allowing for additional accessory units, the second units as I mentioned, and more provisions for density bonuses for affordable housing developers and just to create more density if possible. Another action item will be to develop some objective design standards. So while it does sound scary to allow things permitted by right, where you can put your teeth into something is through your objective design standards to make sure that they meet the, what your intent is for how things should fit in your community. And then there's a number of, as I mentioned previously, the affirmatively furthering fair housing, making sure that there are fair housing practices, and then a number of zoning code amendments that will need to be updated just to come into compliance with state law. There was a discussion about Secog and priority policies to do several of these six items here. They are in line with the programs and policies in the Yuba City housing element as well as what Secog's doing. So there's definitely alignment there with what is happening in terms of facilitating potentially missing middle housing and strategies for higher density, but making development look right. And then reduce displacement. The last one on there is part of the fair housing legislation that's come out. As I mentioned, we did one review already with the state where they had us make mostly minor clarification edits. The state, as you know, always has to have the final word. So they definitely had us make some edits to meet some of these new laws that they are trying to implement. But the document was posted on the website. We have worked with advocates and made sure that everyone has made available the document and addressed any questions that we had. To accompany the housing element tonight, we did an addendum to the EIR. Our staff are also in the process of doing some minor technical updates to your general plan. So there will be a general plan update coming forward with the rezones with an actual EIR. So doing an addendum to your existing EIR is the safest process, most ironclad to get you through this housing element update as we move forward through the rest of the general plan and the full EIR document. And that is all I have. So I'm here for your questions. Thank you. Sorry for talking too long.
I have a quick question for you. If you could go back to the Secog policy slide.
Yes. Oh, sorry. My, I.
Can you help me better understand what number three means?
So discretionary versus by right development. So the state feels that if you are allowing development to occur by right, so again, this is where we talked about your objective design standards. So if you have, here's a listing of everything you have to do for your development and a developer comes in and meets all those lists, then they are approved ministerially without having to go for, through a hearing process. So that's what by right development is. And that's what the state feels will help to incentivize development across the whole Secog region.
They won't have to sit in front of a planning commission and have their project redesigned.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. Other questions?
Through the mayor. Really, really well done housing element document. I appreciate the intense work of going out and reaching and talking with people who serve in various capacities of housing. So there's a lot, a lot of data in here. But I was curious to, to know how, because early on, I think in 2019, it seems so far ago, but it feels like.
A lifetime ago.
Right? Where are we at with the opportunity areas? Because I mean, that's, that was supposed to help kind of stimulate some design or development and credits and all that. It's listed in, in the housing element as a potential for certain sections of our community to help develop potentially low cost or affordable housing. I'm just kind of curious where we're at with that.
So councilwoman, you know, I'm not sure if I totally follow the question. Definitely over time, the city has had a redevelopment area defined, you know, where we had a lower impact fee. And then we've also, there's been some state opportunity zones that had to do with businesses and tax bases. Really for housing, what this is, is it really just as a in-depth analysis and look at your inventory and then it, and then it gives you a program, then it wants you to set up programs to help, whatever you can do as the city to help incentivize, incentivize housing. And so that is anything and everything that can be from reducing impact fees to, to looking at different opportunities to support housing that the council's been working on. So I'm not sure I follow it on the opportunity zones.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's, it's part of, it's, it's to help with some of the opportunity zones or opportunity areas where to somehow assist in further developing some of the low numbers of, you know, lower income housing availability. So it was mentioned in the report and I just wanted to.
Here is the green means go. I know we're coming back to you with some.
No, that, that's a different with Secog. So this is actually to help bring investors to buy certain parts of community and then to be able to build kind of how regional housing does it, but in a much more different and complex ways from what I understand. So I, maybe we can talk offline, but.
I'd definitely be happy to look into it. I will tell you though, just my standpoint with this is that I'm hoping to be around in eight years when this comes due again. And I wanted to really look at this with a realistic approach because you could play a lot of numbers, you know, play numbers with your densities, playing numbers, but really it's looking at what is realistic? What is our current city limits? What's going to happen over the next eight years that's realistic that I could be accountable for at the end of that? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Anybody else? All right. Back to the council for action. Anybody from public like to speak? Thank you.
So to be clear, Mayor, you are opening the public hearing, is that correct?
I don't have that on my agenda, no.
But if you would be so kind as to open the public hearing, we'll make sure we got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
My agenda has public comment first.
Public comment can take place during public hearing.
Okay. There's certain verbiage that needs to be said and I don't have it.
Could perhaps just say, I now open this matter up for public hearing?
Perfect. I now open this matter up for public hearing.
Hi, yes, so I'm Heather Essman. I live in Yuba City on Lincoln Road and I noticed in the presentation that there was a big fat zero in the middle column on Newcombe Ranch and Sanborn. So it sounds like somebody had an opportunity to see that we had some, you can look, you see where it says, not that one. It was the actual, oh yeah, moderate. So you can see that in the Boge Stewart Master Plan and Newcombe Ranch, in the middle, there's a big fat zero. So there was an opportunity recently, I don't know if it's been already approved or not, but for us to have put something or request something for that situation, to have those numbers up, because you can clearly see that the numbers that we have on the very right, which are for the individual units, is quite high, whereas the numbers on the lower, at the very bottom where the shortfalls are, are very low. So I think that the council, as well as maybe communicating from the council to the planning commission and anybody that's working, trying to get this zoning done in a manner that will encourage those numbers on the left-hand side to increase in proportions that are somewhat similar to those on the right-hand side. Because we don't have people, it's, it's not like the community has the percentages on the right more than the percentages on the left. There are definitely people on the lower income spectrum that could really use someplace to live and obviously we're missing some available units to, for them. So I just wanted to kind of focus on that because that's the latest thing that was discussed recently, correct? Yes. So, thank you.
So I'm happy to respond on that one. You know, this is a perfect example of us taking a realistic approach. And so, so this is account of what is going to be in the city limits. And so, so we projected phase one, we didn't take the whole plan. And that's part of the problem with the carryover from the past is because they took a larger area of the Lincoln East specific plan that they never came to be. And so with this one, I said, hey, let's take phase one. Phase one is single-family homes and a multifamily component. And so, so this is, my, so, so your lower, as Jenny spoke, is really relates to your R3, your moderates, your. moderates, your R2, your duplexes, your granny flats, your middle, and then you have your single-family homes. So Newcombe Ranch, you know, Boge Stewart Master Plan, this is a specific plan, it's been in the works for five years. We're not going to rezone it last minute. And so it's realistically, what we've got planned in there is a multifamily component and a single family. I could have made some numbers up, you know, say, hey, 10% of the single family will have an ADU, but we didn't count for that. We're trying to be somewhat realistic, what I think is going to build out in the city, and that's where we're at, and so I projected zero. If we come in with 10, hey, great. But right now, really where we're at and what matters with this is that we have a surplus in moderate right now is how we're zoned in the city. And then as more area annexes in, you know, it's really, again, the big push is to take some of, what the state is finally figuring out, in my eyes, is they're trying to take some of that power out of the bureaucrats, and depending on what, you know, what development comes in with, they want to be ready to go over the counter and go. And so that's really where it's at with this by right. It's really over the counter. What do you want to do?
Other public comment? Online?
No public comment.
I'm going to close the public hearing. And bring it back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Uba City, adopting the 2021 through 2029 City of Uba City General Plan Housing Element Associated Addendum to the General Plan EIR.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, seconded by Councilperson Espendola. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on item 12 passes unanimously. Thank you for all your work over the years, and Ben, thank you as well. Item number 13, right-of-way access and use agreement for the deployment of a citywide fiber optic network with SciFi Networks, Uba City LLC, presented by Diana Langley, our Public Works Director.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before I get started, I would like to introduce Kristi Lopez, who is also part of Shannon's law firm. So welcome, Kristi. Kristi has been the attorney, along with Tiffany Israel, who has helped us navigate this right-of-way use agreement with SciFi Networks. There's Kristi.
Hi.
All right. So just a few days after the city manager, Dave Vaughn, started, SciFi Networks reached out to the city to discuss the opportunity to install a fiber optic network citywide. And so SciFi Networks is an international fiber optic network developer that funds, builds, and operates state-of-the-art community-wide networks, enabling internet service providers to deliver next-generation applications, including superfast internet video and phone. They've established agreements with agencies throughout the country, and some of the agencies within the California that they've established include Rancho Cordova, Pittsburgh, Lancaster, Palmdale, Fullerton, Placentia, and Simi Valley. So what SciFi Networks is proposing is to create SciFi Networks Uba City LLC, which would be a company that would build a privately funded citywide fiber optic system in the city. They would own and maintain the backbone infrastructure and lease the fiber lines to internet service providers that will in turn offer data services to Uba City residents and businesses. And so it's important to note that all residents, businesses, and city facilities would have access to the system. And so when they propose to deploy a citywide system, it's literally a citywide system where you would have a fiber optic line passing every single property within the city. It's also important to note that residents and businesses would have options in that they can maintain their current service providers, or if they chose, they could choose to go with one of the service providers that negotiate a lease agreement with SciFi. So in terms of the agreement, the scope of the project is noted is to install a fiber optic network throughout the entire city. The term is initially 30 years and may be renewed for additional terms of 15 years each upon approval of a written amendment. SciFi would also provide the city up to $100,000 annually to streamline the permitting process. This would help to either reimburse for staff time or for staff to hire a consultant to review their encroachment permit applications. You can imagine, as you're implementing a citywide construction project to install this network, that the permitting in terms of the traffic control plans and the improvement plans will be pretty extensive, and so they would be paying the city for staff time or consultant to review. Another thing is that the city shall not solicit or accept offers from or enter into an agreement with any third party regarding a fiber-to-the-premise system within the city's boundary until after the first anniversary of the effective date. So the effective date is the date in which we sign the agreement. And so for one year, the city couldn't negotiate with another provider to do this, but after that point, the city could negotiate. Also, this doesn't prevent other agencies from coming in to install or enhance their fiber optic networks. Construction is proposed to be slot-cut micro trenching. And so what this is, is literally they do a one and a quarter to two-inch max slot cut along the edge of the lip of gutter. You can see that the fiber is approximately 12 inches deep, and then they backfill with sand and then put a more structurally sound material over that. For locations that are within four-lane arterials, the trench depth would be 14 inches deep. It's important to note, again, that SciFi would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance, including marking of this fiber optic network. And so, you know, as a city, we participate in underground service alert. They would be responsible for marking their facilities, and so that would be their liability. Also, as noted, maintenance, SciFi would be responsible for maintenance of the system. Timing, this is a kind of an extended way to say, basically, they have two years after execution of the agreement to start construction, and then three years after start of construction to actually complete the project, complete the installation. As I noted previously, this agreement does not prevent other service providers from installing their own citywide fiber optic networks or expanding their existing fiber infrastructure. And what's really important, I think, great benefit to the city, is the potential to install a closed-loop municipal fiber system for the city's exclusive use. Currently, we have a basically leased dark fiber from Comcast. The cost of that continues to go up, and it links some of our facilities, not all of our facilities. Through this, we would have the opportunity to negotiate with SciFi, potentially for the city to have access to dark fiber that would access all of our city facilities, which would be tremendous from an operational cybersecurity, everything. This is a huge benefit to the city should we be able to negotiate such a contract. The fiscal impact, there's no cost to the city for SciFi to install the system, and again, they would pay the city up to $100,000 per year for the efficient permitting. You know, once the permitting's completed, they're not going to continue to pay the city. Also, I just want to note, you know, they would not pay franchise fees, nor could they pay franchise fees. It's not a prohibited action. I should say, it's not a permitted action, it's a prohibited action. Alternatives are to do not authorize the execution of a right-of-way access and use agreement with SciFi Networks Uba City LLC, but our recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement with SciFi Networks Uba City LLC. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, or Kristi can answer any legal questions for you.
Thank you, Diana. I do have one quick question for open it to the rest of the council, and that is, it seems to me that when we entered into the agreement with the current cable TV provider, they levied a fee, and I think you were, is that the franchise fee you're talking about?
Yeah.
Can SciFi come back later and do that, like I think we experienced here in the city?
So are you saying that the city collect the fee from them?
No.
To use our right-of-way?
No. I think what happened, and please correct me if I'm wrong with this, but it was, there's a fee that Comcast charges our residents for doing business within the city, and they represented it as a city-based fee.
Oh, I'm not familiar with that.
Mr. Mayor, are you talking about a franchise fee that's being passed through to the consumer?
Yes.
Okay. There is no franchise fee in this particular case, so there would not be a basis for them to pass it on through the consumer.
Okay. That was my question. Counsel? For Ms. Langley?
What other things through the mayor? What other existing, is it Comcast that we have right now, other fiber? What else is out there that we?
It's pretty hit and miss. Recently, we've been getting encroachment permit applications for like AT&amp;T to extend some of their fiber, but it's in very limited areas. And they're also proposing overhead extension, and as we're trying to minimize the overhead utilities, this is a great option for providers in that this would all be placed underground. There will be a few above-ground small cabinets that would be located in the public utility easement, and then they would have two, what they call shelters, that would be located within the city that have a footprint of about 1,000 square feet total, and they have a larger structure within that. But through the permit process, we have the ability to approve where those two shelters would go within the city.
So how much is this going to cost SciFi to do this throughout the whole city? Is there any idea?
So they're still doing, it's going to take them a while to do the engineering, so we don't have an estimate from them. Just, I mean, just, you know, from a gut feeling, I mean, that's millions of dollars to literally be trenching every single street within the city. And not only that, it's the city limits as effective as it is today, and so that would include the recent Newcombe annexation in terms of the streets that exist within that annexation today. And it's also important to note that we did discuss, as additional annexations occur into the city, they will design the system such that they have the ability to expand the facilities to then go into those new neighborhoods or newly annexed areas.
And this would all take place without knowing of these other annexations, three years from now? I mean, beginning to end the whole process?
It could be up to five years. So they have up to two years to start construction, and then three years, once they start construction, to complete it.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. Back to the council.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a right-of-way access and use agreement for development of a cyber, excuse me, citywide fiber optic network with SciFi Networks Uba City LLC.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilperson Kirchner, seconded by Vice Mayor Shaw. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on item 13 passes unanimously. Moving forward to item 14, development of plans and specifications for a second groundwater well installation.
I just want to say thank you to Kristi.
Oh, thank you. You go.
All right, thank you. All right, this next item is a second groundwater well professional services agreement with West Yost of Davis, California. Public Works was fortunate enough to get a United States Bureau of Reclamation grant in the amount of $750,000 for the installation of a second groundwater extraction well at the water treatment plant, which could not come at a better time than to be in the midst of another recent drought. As part of the process, the environmental review has been completed in terms of state and federal level. And because of the drought, we are trying to really push the schedule forward. You can tell that William Zhao of the office created this presentation as he used the word assiduously. That is not typically a word I would use, and I greatly appreciate him trying to step up my presentation game with this. So on June 15th, the city issued requests for proposals. We did have five consultants that attended a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, and we also received five proposals. And the magic number five, there was five criteria to evaluate the proposals on. So with that, West Yost and Associates of Davis was ranked as the top-ranked proposal. West Yost has some experience with doing some initial work for determining the feasibility of aquifer storage recovery at the water treatment plant. So they had a lot of knowledge. They had previously done some test wells, and, you know, their previous knowledge, as well as their experience within this area, put them above these other great consultants, and so staff recommended to move forward with West Yost. And the scope of work includes the design, as well as preparing the contract documents, and then providing hydrogeologic services during well construction and well equipping. In addition, we asked them to provide a proposal for construction management inspection services. We have so many projects going on in engineering right now. With adding in the private development, our construction inspector is very busy, and so West Yost will be providing us an optional proposal, should we need it, that they would provide the construction management inspection services at the time that we actually go to build, but that's something that we can address at a later date. So the fiscal impact is that Public Works staff recommends authorizing development of the design. The total cost of task one through six equates to $572,498, and there is sufficient funding in the account to move forward. Alternatives are to direct staff to further evaluate the proposals, issue another request for proposals, or reject the submittals and postpone design services. We don't recommend any of these alternatives. We recommend to move forward with the awarding a professional services contract to West Yost and Associates in the amount of $572,498, and then authorize the city manager to execute the contract. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Yes.
Through the mayor. Thank you, Diana. Excellent job, as usual. So this is going to be a second well that will access the same aquifer as the first well?
That'll be to be determined. It most likely will, because that aquifer is very deep, number one, but we have to really analyze the water quality to make sure that that's the best aquifer to move into. The other thing is that we're looking long-term. How do we convert this well to aquifer storage recovery, where we could use it to inject water into the aquifer and then withdraw it from the aquifer? This aquifer that we're looking at right now is the most stable in terms of it doesn't move, and so you're not worried about, I inject the water in December, and then it's three miles downstream when I go to pull it out in June. It's very stable. There are some water quality issues that we have to work through to determine if any additional kind of pretreatments required, and so most likely, it will be within the general area of the aquifer of our existing well, but they're also spaced apart, so they're not right next to each other.
So the first well does not have the ability to inject?
No.
Okay. And this is all under the confines of the facility over there on North Gate?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay. Public comment?
Sorry about that. I didn't know that you were going to be considering West Yost. So a year ago, I guess, 1920 grand jury report actually mentions West Yost with Live Oak. I don't have anything against them. I, the comment that I would make is, and the main problem in the situation, as noted in the grand jury report, was that the city was not doing its due diligence and ensuring that the projects, which was a well, were being tracked and making sure that the progress was continuing. And basically, what happened was, and it wasn't just West Yost, I believe there's another company that's involved as well, they're both mentioned in the grand jury report, that because of the delays and the situation that had occurred, and there was some miscalculations at that, according to the report, that the cost then had exploded, basically, and they had, I think, a 20% or more that they had to pay to try to continue the project. The well is still not finished, as far as I'm, I think somebody that I know had actually looked into that. It still is not done, and they have been working on that now for, I think, 17 years, from the beginning of the conception to what they're doing right now. the conception to what they're doing right now, not necessarily these people. So my comment is basically, and it's nothing against you, but maybe if you can keep this in the back of your mind, that when dealing with, basically, any company, but at least with this group, it could have been a different person at this group, to please make sure that you're keeping a good eye on what they're doing, if that makes sense, and keeping them within the timeframe. And I'm sure that Ms. Langley can, I don't know if she's specifically, but she had mentioned that they didn't have a lot of time to do some of the elements of this, so they're going to try and give some parts of that over to West Yoast. So I still think that it would be important for you to have some sort of control to make sure that the project doesn't get kind of delayed and then tends to get more expensive because that's just tax, waste of taxpayer money. So, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the concern and definitely keep our eyes open. I do know that, having worked alongside Ms. Langley and now again with her, that her and her staff, in my opinion at least, are very diligent about minding their contracts. So, but it's duly noted that you have relayed some experiences that haven't been so favorable. So we will keep our eyes open. Well, thank you. Any other questions online? Comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Back to the council.
Through the mayor, I just want to, before making the motion, to say that I met with William Joe, Joe, right? And what a great person on our team. He and I met for an hour and had a discussion about water and ground wells and aquifer and the whole process. And the energy that this assistant engineer brings to our city is really positive. And I left that meeting felt like, wow, this is a complete circle of what we ask for community in our community, and meaning that this young person, because he's younger than me, I can say that, went to our schools here and graduated in our high school and went to UC Davis and made the decision to come back and work for the city to do some service for the community. And if any of you ever have the chance to sit down with him, he would, you would just walk out of there thinking water is like the best thing to figure out, to solve and fix. But this well is going to be extremely, extremely important in our community, and I'm glad that I had the opportunity to meet him. And so you have an awesome team, Diana. Thank you so much.
See, all of our engineers are rock stars.
They are, actually, they are.
Assiduously.
Assiduously.
So I move that to award the professional agreement, award a professional services agreement to West Yoast Associates, Inc., with the notification that we were given here early of Davis, California, and the amount of $572,498 for development of plans and specifications for the ground well and hydrogenetics, services and other services in preparation for and during the construction of the new potable groundwater well. And then authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval as to the legal form by the city attorney, who is awesome too.
I have a motion by Councilperson Espandola, a second by Vice Mayor Shaw. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes unanimously. Item 15, electronic and paperless filing of the Fair Political Practice Commission disclosure statements. Sierra comes out from behind the fishbowl. Hello.
Thank you, mayor and council, for giving me the opportunity to exit my little bubble there. Tonight, I'm here to talk about electronic filing of FPPC disclosure statements. All of you are very familiar with these statements, so I will make it brief. The short version is that the FPPC requires that elected officials, hold on, let me push the button here. They require that elected officials and certain employees file a variety of forms in varying frequency, right? Some of them are annually, some of them are biannually, some of them are when you start, some of them when you finish, and they're all different, and it's all very complicated and difficult to keep track of when you're a busy professional. And so currently, I work with more than 100 elected officials and employees on Form 700 filings, as well as all of the required campaign paperwork that you are familiar with. And it is a lot to manage. And because the only people that really, at this point, are able to file electronically are you guys. Everybody else currently has to file a paper copy of their Form 700 with me in person. And that's just because we're living in the dark ages. And until recently, it was something that was not a priority. And the council has been very understanding and very generous in helping us move into the 21st century. And so this is one of the ways that we can do that, to improve our process, to make sure that we're more efficient, both on the administrative side and also, you know, for the people that have to file this paperwork. We want to move to electronic filing. So the short version is that we did a lot of research, and we talked to a lot of different agencies. And net file is the preferred solution for local cities and counties that have to administer this sort of paperwork with the FPPC. And the government code does allow for government agencies to require electronic filing at this point. So either way, regardless of what decision is made today, we're going to make the option for electronic filing available to people because I think it's a convenience and it's efficiency. But what we're asking for today, or what we're recommending at this point, is that you guys ultimately approve an ordinance. Today, we're introducing it, but down the line, we will ask you to approve an ordinance which will require the electronic filing of all of this paperwork. And with that comes, again, the efficiency, but also the benefit to the filer. You'll get automatic notices, reminders in advance. It'll all kind of be pre-programmed and very automated so that you don't have to worry about deadlines and things like that. It will just happen kind of automatic, so. Any questions I can answer regarding electronic filing?
All right. Any questions?
Through the mayor. Just summarizing what you said in lieu of all the decoration in your office. You want us to take away the torch and give you a lightsaber, right?
Right.
Who's going to check to see if someone's got a comment online?
No public comment.
All right. We'll wait for you to check to make sure.
No public comments.
Okay, thanks. All right, back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Yuba City, adding Chapter 13 Disclosure Statement Filings and Retention. Due Title II of the Yuba City Municipal Code to allow for paperless electronic filing and availability of statements for public review and record retention.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilperson Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item 15 passes unanimously. We will move to item 16, Discussion and Direction Regarding Changing From At-Large to a Division-Based System of Elections Presented by Dave Vaughn, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight with the assistance of our city attorney, Shannon Chaffin, I'm going to walk the council through step one of moving in consideration for changing from an at-large to a division-based system for elections. Purpose: To determine whether to declare the city council's intent to change from an at-large elections for members of the city council to division-based elections and to establish a timeline for doing so. Members of the council are currently elected at-large. Under an at-large system of elections, every voter in the city votes for each member of the council regardless of where the voter or the candidate is registered to vote in the city. Under a district-based system of elections, the city is divided into districts. Candidates may only run for the seat representing the district in which they are represented to vote, and voters may only vote for a candidate from their division. Currently, all California County Board of Supervisors are already elected by districts. The transition to district elections for cities is now becoming increasingly common in California. Regionally, the cities of Chico, Davis, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and Roseville have all recently transitioned to district elections. One of the reasons for this transition is that the district elections are consistent with the California Voters' Right Act, which encourages districts for communities with a significant population of minority groups. Additionally, if certain jurisdictions do not transition themselves, they could be compelled to do so by a judge through a process that could potentially restrict community input and set aside election results. Lots of background. The initial 2020 data census was finally released on August 12th, 2021, or at least some of that census data. The day before, the city received a letter from Attorney Matthew Rexrode on behalf of prospective person allegedly residing in the city claiming that the city's at-large system of elections violates the California Voters' Act. The letter demands that the city switch to a division-based system of elections and threatens to sue the city if they do not voluntarily switch to a district-based system of elections. The letter specifically alleges that the district's at-large system dilutes the ability for Latinos and those Indian ancestry to elect candidates of their choice or otherwise influence the outcome of the city elections. While the city has a tradition of diversity of representation, including the nation's first Sikh woman as mayor, as well as a Latino of Mexican-American origin currently sitting on the council, public agencies who did not move to district-based elections are exposed to a greater legal risk. Despite inaccuracies in the letter, it serves to trigger certain timelines under the California Voters' Act, even though all of the updated 2020 census information has not been released from the U.S. Census Bureau. The first step towards switching to division-based elections is to adopt a resolution, one, declaring the city's intention to transition from an at-large to division-based elections; two, describing the specific steps the city will take to facilitate this transition; and three, establishing an estimated timeframe for doing so. The resolution before the council tonight is only a preliminary step, not a final authorization to transition to division-based elections. The full process of the transition is described in the staff report. Shannon, did I miss anything?
Not at all.
Good to go. Alternatives: Continue this matter to the next council meeting scheduled for September 21st. This is still within the initial 45-day safe harbor period, which ends on September 25th, 2021. Decline to adopt a resolution of intent to move to district-based elections. Staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Yuba City declaring its intention to transition from at-large to division-based elections.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I do have a couple comments. First, thanks to staff. I know this issue has been sort of orbiting around out there for quite some time, and appreciate the work that they have put into the research, et cetera. I suppose this question is probably more towards the city attorney is, you know, in addition to the California Voters' Right Act, there are some financial, potential financial consequences if we don't do something. Is that correct?
Yes, the city of Palmdale ended up paying something like $4.5 million because they were contesting these sorts of actions. It is very easy in the state of California to show that there's some sort of disparate impact among minority or ethnic groups or any sort of group. And technically, now, in the state of California, everybody's a minority, right? So it's very, very easy to pick one of them, and the standard is, hey, if you can show any way that this minority is not being represented in its equivalent impact, you can be subject to a lawsuit under the California Voters' Rights Act, and courts basically rule in favor. It's very hard for a city to win. I think the loss rate right now for cities is something like 95% or more. And not only do they have to pay their own attorney's fees and costs, they often have to pay the other side's fully loaded costs, and I can tell you the attorneys set, in my mind, arbitrarily high rates. So you're lucky if you get by with a settlement for only, you know, half a million, a million, $2 million on something like this if you don't change to districting in a timely manner.
And I know your firm does a lot of business with other local governmental entities up and down the state. This isn't just limited to cities. Perhaps you could help with the public understanding of that as well?
Yes, it's counties. All the counties have switched over. It's cities, it's community service districts, it's basically anything that's a defined public agency. And there are attorneys who go up and down the states doing the research, trying to find cities and counties and CSDs and everything else that haven't switched over to districting yet, and they send them a letter.
Okay. That concludes my questions. Anybody else? For Mr. Vaughn or Mr. Chaffin? You forgot. I believe it. Okay, anything, anybody from the pub? Oh, I do have a public comment card. I remembered this time.
This is why I'm here this evening. Actually, this is a huge issue. Where is everybody? I don't understand. So the person that spoke earlier is a friend of mine, and she was basically saying that the same feeling that I have, that we do need to go to division-based elections. When you do that, you have a representative that's representing you, and you know who that spokesperson is, so you would go to that person. At this point, if I had any qualms about the city or what's going on, I don't know who I would approach because I don't have a representative that actually represents what I'm, for my area, right? So right now, for the county, Karen Baines is our representative, and so therefore, I know who I could go to if I really needed to feel that I had to go to the county supervisors for something. But the main question I had is, because I've seen this in when you're doing the lighting districts or things like that, and people have to recuse themselves because, I mean, I don't know exactly where you live, but several of you live relatively close to each other. So I'd like to know how this impacts the current city council. I think that, and I don't know Mr. Kirchner very well, he's relatively new, but the current constellation we have, I think you guys are doing a great job. And it would be not very beneficial to us if we had to come up with something, with a system, where we basically pit two of you against each other because you're going to be in the same district. Does that make sense? Maybe if you could just let us all know, you don't have to tell us where you live, and we don't know where the districts are going to be, but some of you are living close enough to each other that you could pretty much assume that you're going to be competitive in some competition then for the seat that you currently have. So if maybe you could just let us know so that we can kind of get an idea of how this would impact the current constellation, yeah, that's my main question.
Yes, some of us do live in relative closeness to each other. I would say that until we start seeing maps and understanding where the districts and the demography lies, it would be premature for us to answer whether or not we are. I don't know. So I think it's something that's definitely, to your point, number one, there's going to be quite a few more meetings and quite a few more opportunities for the public to not only speak on the matter, but also visit whatever maps get generated.
And through the mayor, if I could add to that?
Please.
The other thing, too, is in addition to not have any maps, because we don't have any public input at this point, is that anybody who's been elected to date will be allowed to serve out their full term, no matter if we go to districting. So there are at least two council members that are on their first part of their four-year term here. They will be able to go through their full year term. It'll be a transition process.
Okay. Anybody else from the public like to comment? Anybody online?
No public comments.
Okay. Bring the matter back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution of the city council of Yuba, the city of Yuba City declaring its attention to transition from at-large to division-based elections.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Kirchner, a second by Councilperson Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item 16 passes unanimously. Moving to item 17, Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding. Moving to item 17, Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, tonight, we have before you Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding for your review and consideration. This memorandum of understanding includes a 2% increase in hourly rate for all classifications. It provides similar re-opener language that we have throughout all of our collective bargaining agreements with each unit that allows for an opening to happen in April of each year for review and determination that's consistent with our current budget process. This includes a $4,000 signing bonus for the first full pay period following council's approval. This also introduces longevity pay for folks in this unit, 10 years, 15 years, and 25 years, 2.5% each of those milestones. Fiscal impact, an increase in cost of $502,100 for the year FY 21-22, and $728,000 cumulatively for FY 22-23. We're recommending to adopt a resolution approving a two-year memorandum of understanding with the Police Office Association, as well as authorizing supplemental appropriation from unallocated general funds for FY 21-22 in the amount of $502,100.
Questions from the council? Comment from the public? Comment online?
No public comment.
All right. Back to the council for potential action.
To the mayor? Move to adopt a resolution approving a two-year memorandum of understanding with the Police Officers Association and authorize a supplemental appropriation of unallocated general funds for fiscal year 2021-22 in the amount of $502,100.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a tie on a second. Mr. Harris was a little quicker than you, Ms. Espandola, sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item 17 passes unanimously. We'll move to item number 18.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Police Sworn Midmanagers Memorandum of Understanding. Under this memorandum of understanding, this includes a 3% hourly increase for all classifications, again, re-opener language that is consistent with what we have in all other collective bargaining agreements in each of the units that we've placed in this year, and also includes a $4,000 signing bonus for the first full pay period following the approval of this agreement. Fiscal impact, an increase in cost of $49,400 to the 2021-22 budget, and $78,500 cumulatively for the 22-23 budget. Recommendation, adopt a resolution approving a two-year memorandum of understanding with Police Sworn Midmanagers, authorize a supplemental appropriation from unallocated general funds in the amount of $49,400 for fiscal year 2021-22.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Any questions from the council? Comments from the public? Comments online?
No public comment.
All right. Back to the council for action.
To the mayor? Move to adopt a resolution approving a two-year memorandum of understanding with Police Sworn Midmanagers and authorize a supplemental appropriation of unallocated general funds in the amount of $49,400 for fiscal year 2021-22.
Second.
You got it this time. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilperson Espandola. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item passes unanimously, item 18. Moving to 19, future agenda items. Opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any other comments relating to the agenda that may have come in during the Anybody who have anything for Mr. Vaughn? Seeing none. Reports and communications, following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. First up this evening is Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as of today's meeting, I attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District. We had a finance committee meeting, and their audit has been approved and reviewed, and this is one of those documents that has taken them a while to get through the process, but it's finally done. Also, one of the items that we are recommending to the full board is to research for Feather River Air Quality Management District staff to receive PERS through some of their services. So we're going to do some further research on that. I also attended, and all of these, most of these meetings are all virtual, attended the Norsec Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group, and that's when I learned that Yuba City received a grant for several of our projects, and commended William at the meeting for the excellent work in putting, in presenting his projects to the technical assistant committee, and so he was commended for how well those presentations were. And in that, bringing some additional projects that, as Diana mentioned earlier, and this will continue to improve infrastructure in the city. Also attended the regional water advocacy program, which reviews multiple bills through the state, and also attended the regional water federal affairs, and that particular one is talking about the infrastructure bill that is still being discussed and not initially signed yet by President Biden. One of our other activities that, as a city, every drop counts, if you are not familiar with our campaign. It's a pretty awesome campaign that our public works, is putting together and working with Yuba Water Agency. And so they're, we're doing, they've done some, you know, videos and material in English, and so we did Spanish video with Univision that should be airing, I think, sometime this week. It's Dispierta Sacramento, Wake Up Sacramento. They have Dispierta America, so we'll be in some of those time slots. If you understand Spanish, I apologize if some of those words are not clearly enunciated. There was a few takes in the mayor's office, so thank you for letting me use your office, Mayor. We had, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency was canceled, no agenda items for this month. But October's going to be a pretty big, I think, month for the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. The city, our city, we hosted our homeless task force, and I'm happy to say that Mayor Boomgarden will be joining the task force, and so we're going to be doing some work together on that within the community. There's a scheduled cleanup date that I think our city manager sent out, September 19th. I hope that we can all join in and go speak to local businesses. Our team has been really busy in preparing for strategies that we can share with the businesses in the hot zone areas where we find there are multiple homeless individuals, resources, and also listening to those business owners and understanding how we can hopefully help with homeless situations in the community. We also have upcoming, through the homeless task force and work, our Government Affairs Committee meeting, which is going to be tomorrow, and then on Friday, the mayor and myself will be meeting with the county and further discussing plans of action that we can work together in the homeless arena to decrease the numbers and improve the quality of life for our community. If any of you are interested to have further discussion on this topic, I'd be more than happy to have an offline talk with each of you independently, if you like, as long as we're within the Brown Act rights, city attorney. Also, spoke at the groundbreaking ceremony at the Cedar Lane 41 units, which are low-cost affordable housing. It's a partnership that was funded through multiple local agencies and the consortium through Regional Housing Authority. So this is a, it's a really neat project. It's taken multiple, multiple partners and work to put together, but they're building 41 units. And one of those units will be set aside for an individual who is under the age of 24 and may be experiencing homelessness. And I believe, I know Councilman Kirchner was there to support the Dixie Fire fundraiser that was hosted at El Sarape, what a nice event to support our community around us. I participated in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the countywide oversight board was canceled recently, but I did attend Yuba Sutter Transit in lieu of the vice mayor. He had other obligations that day. Everyone's kind of hoping that the Sikh parade is going to happen this year, certainly I am. It's a big part of our community, and one of the recommendations was to authorize operation of a parking lot shuttle service that they would provide. We also adopted a resolution designating the executive director of their, I'm sorry, and their designee of, as a authorized representative for execution of all sustainable community grant-related agreements and amendments. Something that did come up during the meeting, and our vice mayor has talked about this in the past, is the shuffle that they're in right now. They're in the process of going from their facility off of Highway 70 over by Marysville High School to a new location off of Northville Road by Feather River Boulevard. And so in that process, they brought in a local tree company to clean out the perimeter. The perimeter's lined with oleander bushes, and unfortunately, people were, homeless were living in them, but the tree company brought out a botanist, and it turns out that there is a endangered bush, or I'm sorry, not endangered, it was federally protected bush, it's called an elderberry bush tree, that's federally protected, so everything kind of stops, and right now, they're in the process of trying to navigate this. And so, long story short, building will probably go ahead as planned, but not before they make sure that this, this bush has got the protection it needs. I was lucky enough to help out with the, our mayor at our annual Blues Brews and Barbecue, which our Kiwanis group put on. It was a big deal this year because it didn't happen last year, and I think they came up with, raised them like $35,000.
$50K.
Wow. Wow. So it was, it was, it was well-attended, it was the first one I've actually, I've attended them in the past, but I've never actually helped out, and man, they put you to work. I found that out pretty quickly. That's great, goes to a great cause. In closing, I would like to thank our Yuba Sutter Fire Department for their presentation earlier and reminding us of that day 20 years ago, and I'm hopeful that people in our community take a moment and remember that. And there are events to attend on Saturday. And I'd also like to thank our soon-to-be fire, excuse me, our police chief for reminding us of the event that happened since we, since we last had our, had a city council meeting. So thank you.
Counselmember Harris.
Yeah, real quick, I too was planning on thanking both of you gentlemen for bringing that information forward. It's always good to, and grounding and humbling to remember those who gave everything and why we're all here. So thank you for those couple moments, appreciate it. Like Councilmember Kirchner spoke, I had written down this, I just put down some bush, but you knew the name of it, so that's pretty good.
Some bush.
We're going to protect that thing, and from what I understand, we are able to transplant it, so that's good, as long as we don't kill it. But, so, anyway, that was, that was a lot of the part. One thing you did fail to mention about the transit meeting was you filled in as chair and did a great job. So that was, that was awesome. CalCOG was canceled, so I can't report on that. Regional Housing, one of the main takeaways from that meeting was we have acquired some land in Colusa with the intent of being to build some more lower-income housing units in that area to help them, them out, as well as the homeless folks, lower-income folks, so that's good. And then, as always, SECOG and the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee that I am on, we heard a lot about SECOG today when we talk about arena numbers and the housing element and the priorities for SECOG, and thank you, Ben, for including that. They are very important, they have been proven to really make a difference, and we are listening to that, and the state will obviously take note. It's a challenging thing to meet, and I think we've done an outstanding job based on initial conversations. When the arena numbers came out, we're only sub, I think it was 217, lower-income units, and so I think we have an opportunity, of course, to work on that, but the plan is in place, and it's going to be a good thing. So SECOG is very busy with multiple different things, as it's a regional organization, Green Means Go, lowering greenhouse gas, getting people out of their cars, the Regional Trails Network, it just goes on and on, so we stay quite busy with that. So again, that effort continues, and those are the things I wrote down that were not canceled, and thank you for the opportunity to be a part of it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I give my reports from, GSEC was the main one that I attended, and thank you, Councilmember Kirchner. I didn't know you served as chair, because my vice chair was supposed to be there, so I just want to take a few moments and reflect and thank our FD and PD for, like they said, for coming forward tonight. I know I have seemed kind of quiet tonight, and I think it's just because of everything that's going on in the world in the 20 years coming up. Being a military veteran, on duty the night that the Gulf War started, and then going through 9/11, and then the loss of the 13 military, and then I was with the mayor out at Calvary Christian Center on Sunday for their presentation. It just, it weighs heavy on my heart right now, and my heart goes out to all of our men and women who serve, who have served and who continue to serve, military, first responders, police department, fire departments. So just know that, I'm sure it's across the board with this council, but this is one council member that all of you are always in my thoughts and prayers, and especially during this time right now. So if I seemed quiet, that's what's going on with the vice mayor up here. But with that, again, thank you. I didn't realize that you were going to end up chairing, and I didn't get that report from Mr. Martin, but I'm glad you did a good job, so. GSEC was where I spent my time between the last council meeting at their retreat, and if you want to find out how to get something done, look at a lot of busy people, and you'll see some things happening. And as Councilmember Harris will tell you, this group is pretty well-charged, they're very committed, and the neatest thing about GSEC, which is the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, is you've got the decision-makers in that room that can actually get things done. And so some highlights of that meeting in it, you know, we've heard little bits of it, and you guys may have heard about Aggie Square that's coming to Sacramento. It's a collaboration between a lot of medical field and R&amp;D companies and UC Davis that is going to go into one of the hardest-hit areas of Sacramento, build a complete center, and then not only use that for training and research and things, but they have agreed that a vast majority of the employees that we employed there will be right there from that local area. So that's huge. And so these are the ideas that come up, so, you know, we need to be looking at these opportunities, because as the mayor and I talked, we've got some great opportunities here, even with ag research and some ag development and such. How do we type, tap into that pipeline and create something up here as well? I've got it. We talked about homelessness, and it's really a quality-of-life issue, and I'm just going to be very candid in this, it's not a lack of compassion, but on the one hand, you get, "Help us, you know, we need to be very compassionate," and on the other hand, and I'm sure all five of us have got this, "We have a problem, come deal with it." And at some point, we've got to get those two communities to come together. And so they talked about that and some efforts that... And so they talked about that and some efforts that, that they would be looking at from not only the government sector, but the, the private sector as well, to try to bridge those gaps over time. So as that information comes forward, then I hope to bring that forward. One of the large items, and there should have been a press release by now because they announced it at the retreat, is there are five bank CEOs that are a member of GSEC. And those five banks have committed to $100 million of financing available for low-mod housing. So projects that will have here, that they're looking for financing, it may be regional housing, maybe some of the multi-units and whatnot. GSEC is going to have those programs available to help them finance the infrastructure to that. There's a ton that came through that, and the best thing that I can do with what came out of GSEC, and I've already spoken with the mayor and the city manager, is I'd like to get Mr. Broome and Matt up here as well, and let's reset down and give you a synopsis of, of some of the ideas, and then let's just start throwing it against the wall and see what sticks. What can we take into our community? Because right now, GSEC seems to be running along that corridor of 80 and 50, but they want to turn north, but they need us to get engaged. And that's been the big takeaway, as I've said, on GSEC this year. They just want us to get engaged. And we were talking about the general plan earlier. You know, they're available to go in so that you, Ben, and Mr. Vaughn, you guys will know what they're trying to bring to this area. They'll meet with us on a monthly basis so that we can understand, as we are designating land, what might be down the line. The 5G, or not the 5G, but the fiber optic undergrounding is another huge infrastructure to a lot of the industries that are reaching out to this area, which are relying on the technology background. So there's a lot of good potential to get people to look up our way, and one of the big things that helps is the big A word, which is affordable. We are a lot more affordable than Sacramento itself. So there's a huge opportunity, and I look forward to those meetings coming up. And speaking of coming up, want to put it on everyone's radar that the Marysville Stampede, which says Marysville, but it's really both cities, is next week. We have the cattle drive through the city next Wednesday, amateur roping event on Thursday, and rodeo is on Saturday, Sunday. So grab your cowboy hat, and not necessarily grab a horse, but grab your hat, and come on out and rodeo. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple announcements first. I just want to make sure that everyone out there in viewer land and those that are here are aware of the mayor's Leadership Institute. This is a, an effort by the city to allow folks to come behind the curtain, if you will, and learn more about their city and how it operates. It's led by our, our city staff, and I think that this is an excellent opportunity for folks to really see and interact with the folks that are making things happen within our city. Applications are going to be accepted through October. On the subject of 9/11, as the vice mayor mentioned, Chief Landon and myself and the vice mayor were invited to Calvary Christian Center for their annual 9/11 ceremony. This was the commemoration of the 20-year anniversary. The keynote speaker was a gentleman who was on the 81st floor of Tower 2, and, and he's one of 14 people that survived from that floor and above, is all. Incredible story, incredible picture. There's a picture of him cowering under his desk and the jetliner coming into his, into the building. Why is, it, it's just one of those things, as the vice mayor and the rest of us, I'm sure, it's like, take a moment and reflect on what happened 20 years ago, and, and don't forget that, you know, that, you know, these folks, you know, lost their lives unnecessarily, but it was also a time, I think, when the nation was actually working much closer together. It would be nice to be able to get back to that. With the 9/11 ceremony, there's a couple of things that are going on this weekend that the public is certainly invited to attend. One is, at each one of the fire stations, and I see Chief Lublou had to go, I heard the pager go off, but I believe it's at 7:45 or so in the morning at each one of the fire stations, there'll be a brief ceremony, which is, coincides with the times that the airliner hit the, hit the building. There's also at 3:45 in the afternoon at the Sutter County Museum, a remembrance there, and I think it's at 3:43, actually, and that signifies the number of firefighters that unfortunately passed away at the incident. Events that participated in, most of the stuff that, that I'm a member of really did not have any meetings. However, the vice mayor and I did interview two outstanding youth for our youth commission. It's always interesting to, to see the youngsters that want to get involved in, in the city, and, and very good, very good talent. So always tough to figure out, okay, how do you tell the person that they're fantastic, but you don't have a spot for them? So we, we got a little creative, and we're, with the city attorney's help, we created some spots, so. Thanks to the council for supporting that. Business Retention Task Force, an effort that's been headed up by the vice mayor, getting a little closer to the finish line. The vice mayor, the city manager, and I will be meeting to review the results of some surveys, and reporting back here to the council, and then thinking about next steps. LAFCO, I have a LAFCO meeting this week. The reason I bring it up in advance is it has to deal with fire service. Of course, I do have a little bit of a soft spot for that, but, you know, there's an issue, there's an issue in our county with fire service, and people say, well, it's not Yuba City's issue, but it really is. We have automatic aid and mutual aid, which means we're sharing resources with each other all the time. And if the Sutter County Fire System begins to experience challenges, and they are, then that could directly impact us. Not only that they ask us for service, but we ask them for help as well. So this is, at this particular meeting, we're going to begin the process based upon some grand jury recommendations, or findings, anyway, is to really look into what that delivery system looks like in the county. And this evening, I would like to close in memory of Francis Adams. Francis Adams served our country as a US Marine. He also served the city of Yuba City as a Yuba City Police Officer, and Francis passed away here last night. And with that, I will close the meeting.